And welcome into To Hatchapod, Corey Costello, Greg Garrett, our Finance Director, Hamed Jones, joining us on the show today, coming off a couple of city council meetings on Monday, June 3rd, and the big one being the budget. So first of all, gentlemen, welcome back to Toach Pod. That's where you usually come in and say like, hey, I'm glad to be here.
I just had a little.
Just because Key had to go do something else doesn't mean that we throw it off.
Well, okay.
You're right. I would normally edit this out, but I'm.
Well, yeah. Thank you, Corey Costello, for having, you know, hosting Hamed and I, right? We're, we're so privileged to be here. Thank you.
That's what I like to hear. Yeah. So, well, the reason why, I mean, obviously that we're talking, not only recapping.
Well, you didn't give Hamed a hard time just now.
No, I'm setting him up right now.
No, I know, but he didn't say hello.
Well, you know, he's, he's not a regular. Like, you should know better.
Let's get on with this.
That is not, but Hamed Jones, joining us on the, on the show. He is our Finance Director here at the City of Tatchby. And last night, special, or yesterday afternoon, actually, we had our special budget meeting workshop with the city council. And we approved the five-year budget for fiscal year 24, 25 through 28, 29. And a, what was the grand total on the budget this year?
Just under 40 million.
Just under $40 million. And what did Phil Smith say when he started in the 1980s on the council?
He said four, five million.
Four or five. So that's, that's where we've gone. And there's a lot of things. So what were some of the, you know, there's a lot of different, we've got the general fund, we've got our revenues, we've got expenditures, we have those, what we call enterprise funds, which are water, sewer, airport, those sorts of things that are designed to sort of, you know, pay for themselves with the, with the rates and the delivery of the service. But what were some of the big highlights that you sort of laid out for the council last night? And then they questioned you on a bit during yesterday's meetings?
So I'd say there's a lot of capital projects. So a lot of work being done to secure grants by our Development Services Department, our Public Works Department, and also using Measure S funds from general fund. So I think we had over 6 million in capital projects this next year, over 20 million over the next three years planned. So, you know, and then overall, it's a balanced budget. We have healthy reserves. We're using some of those reserves to pay for these big street projects over the next couple of years, about four and a half million just in Measure S street-related projects.
Yeah, we're going to be paving a lot of, of our existing street and roads. So we're not, we're not creating new streets and roads. We're maintaining what we have. Some of the examples would be Arabian Estates on the north side of, of Highway 58 off of Dennison. Those, those roads, streets and roads have not been touched in many, many years. So they're going to get brand-new streets and roads. We're going to repave Robinson, F Street, so on and so forth, over the next two years. So we're really excited about being able to use those funds, you know, thanks again to the citizens for voting yes on Measure S, right? That's where the money was promised to be spent, and that's where we're spending it, on maintaining our infrastructure and public safety. Over the last couple of months, we have really invested a lot of money in new vehicles for our police department. Last night, the city council approved several new pieces of equipment for our public works, you know, loaders and backhoes and things, and a bucket truck that helps, you know, put up the American flags.
Things we normally rent.
We normally rent, and now we're going to own that. So it's really an investment in the efficiencies to be able to maintain this great city.
And if you look, and if you look at the total fund, as Hamed pointed out, you know, it's a balanced budget. But if you look at the next two years, you'll see these little brackets, and you're thinking, oh, that's a deficit. Well, it's not, because what we're doing is taking the Measure S funds in the next two years. What's our total next, like 2.6 million or something like, over the next two years with some road projects? So we're taking some of the reserves, which are healthy, out in order to do more now. And so that's why if you look at it, you might go, oh, well, bracket means, no, it's not like we don't have the money. We're just pulling that out of reserve that we got from previous years, because now's the time to strike and do some of these big road projects on, on some surface streets that we don't necessarily get state funding for and that sort of thing. So more of the neighborhood streets are going to be touched than they have in several years.
That's right.
Yeah, that's right. So yeah, if you looked at our general fund budget, the next two fiscal years, it shows about a $1.3 million deficit. And like you said, over two years, that's 2.6 million. But we were estimating for our mid-year about over $2 million in surplus. Previous year, we had about three and a half millions in surplus. We had some ARPA funds. We had the first quarter of Measure S. So we've kind of cushioned our reserves, our fund balance. We're using some of those from the last couple of years now to balance those, that budget the next two years and get these big street projects done.
Yeah, because we compared the budget, you know, the deficit to surplus based on what the revenue comes in this fiscal year or next fiscal year. And so, yeah, we're spending over that because we're pulling out of reserves. So that's why that you'll, you'll see the parentheses on those. So it's not like we're in debt. We're actually pulling, pulling reserves out to do those projects. And, and then some of the things, as Greg pointed out, using those funds to help. Yeah, we do a lot of stuff, not only on the American flags, Christmas lights, but when traffic signals that we control, a lot of them are controlled by Caltrans along Tucker, but some of the things that we control, they go out. Signs, sometimes the wind kicks up around here, those signs start to hang, instead of waiting to rent a lift or something. We can go out and be on it right away.
Or we're maintaining the Heritageic Museum or the depot, you know, all these assets that we own. You know, last night, I think I mentioned, we're, we're a group of planners. We plan our future, whether it's our financial future, our asphalt maintenance, our investment in our police department. We're planning every day, not just for tomorrow, next month, next year, but five, 10 years out. And so whenever you do that, and you stick to the plan, you know, and you divert a little bit from time to time, depending on what's going on, but you really start to achieve progress. And then it's, you notice it, and then you, you buy into it, and then you do more, and then people invest, right? It's all about that healthy community atmosphere.
And what are some of the, we talked about some of the projects already, but one of the slides, a couple of the slides you showed, Hamed, were the major expenditures that we have. And some of these projects, and actually you put on the slides, and folks didn't even see that in the agenda, but what the funding source was, because some are federal grants, some are a combination of federal grants, and then Measure S funds, or whether it's SB1 money, which is the gas tax we give from the state, it's not enough to do much. And so the, the ability to have some Measure S money to help with those road projects is huge. So what were some of the stuff that were, some of the things were budgeted for, at least major project-wise, the next couple of years?
So the biggest one we had dollar-wise was the Dennison bicycle and pedestrian improvements. So that's at 2.1 million, all completely covered by a federal grant. We touched on the, the street pavement rehab, that's a little over 2 million. Most of that Measure S, a little bit coming from SB1, like you said. Transit Center Sidewalk Connection, again, that's state grant-funded, a roundabout at Tucker and High Line, federal grant, also county and city traffic mitigation fees. So, and then more street work, Capitol Hills area resurfacing, 345,000, and so on. So just lots, lots of projects going on, lots of different funding sources going out there. You know, traditionally, we'd probably try to protect and not use the general fund, you know, as much as we can. But in this case, we've got those healthy reserves. We have the Measure S money. We want to use that on maintaining some of these roads.
And too, a lot of these as well, you know, like the Dennison bike, bicycle and pedestrian improvements, a lot of the funding, whether it's federal and especially state, they, they want those more active transportation grants. They're not looking to give you money to fix your roads. They want you to add another piece. But as part of that, you end up fixing the road a little bit as you're adding a bike lane. In this case, we've got some sidewalks and bike lanes going in. But I feel like the narrative's almost switched to now, we're so, we're such an active community, the East Tatchby, you know, the Tatchby Boulevard Bike Path being one of them, and Antelope Run, and things even out to Golden Hills and the Freedom Trail, that there's so much, we have so much of an active community. People now, they, they want bike lanes, and this is an opportunity to connect some of the stuff we already have into the Tatchby Boulevard Bike Path. And so more and more, I feel like this, it comes out that like, oh, we're missing a section here. I mean, I know on Dennison, there was not even a sidewalk after a certain point, and you were, had to run in the dirt or ride on the shoulder, which was very tiny. And so people now are more and more expecting, and they like, they like to see those projects that are connecting the active transportation. What else on the major, we talked about some of the vehicle purchases and that sort of thing, which Public Works, and some of that too, is a state mandate these days, because the backhoe we have is perfectly fine, but the emission standards continually change, and the state comes back and says, hey, I know you've got this backhoe, and it's probably great for what you have, but the emissions aren't right, and you have to redo it.
It's really a bummer, because somebody in Arizona, whether it's personal or maybe a, a public agency, you know, the city of, you know, Phoenix, I don't know, they're going to buy our equipment for, you know, a steel, right? Because we auction it. And then we're required to purchase this, this, you know, very expensive, you know, we're going to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on a tractor, a backhoe, and a bucket truck, you know, half a million dollars.
Yeah.
And it's really a shame, because those pieces of equipment work just fine. We maintain them just fine, which you would expect. But carb just will not allow us to utilize them anymore.
Yeah, that's the Air Resources Control Board in the state of California, and they changed the emission standards. And so with diesel equipment, and so that sometimes means we have to replace stuff. And we recently spent quite a bit on new police vehicles. A lot of that was backlogged from several years. It's been very hard to get police-worthy vehicles in the state. We've had to go outside of the state sometimes to get them, and just find, find ways to get those vehicles. But there, some of them are parked by the PD now. They're getting outfitted and they're logoed, and there's everything from F-150 trucks to explorers. It's kind of, it's a cool look, and then hopefully those will be on the streets.
Yeah, that's, that's right. And we're really excited. And that goes back to the healthy general fund with reserves, because, you know, we're, we're planning on buying these over time. But we, sometimes we're not allowed to, because they're just not there, right? Because of production issues, or chip issues, or whatever it happens to be. But when these vehicles become available, there's usually two, three, or four of them, and boom, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Right? So we, we can write a check. One of the things that we invested in last night, the council approved was our asset management system. So we're going to be purchasing some software. Our Public Works Department has done a lot of research on this. And they're going to be plugging in all of our assets. And you think about what we do as a corporation, right? We're, we're Public Works, we're Public Safety, we're, we're planners, as I mentioned, but we have assets throughout. And those assets are put to use, but we want to make sure that we're managing all of those assets, those people, the, the equipment, all of those sorts of things. So over the next year or two, we're going to be loading it in and able to create more efficient work orders. And just everything that we do, we're just, we're, we're really on the goal, we've set the goal of becoming as efficient as we can be. So really excited about the investment in this asset management system.
And that stuff is, that's something that uses, I mean, you can use the term AI, but what it does is any piece of, whether it's, maybe it's a valve, it's a main, it's a, it could be as simple as a vehicle, or, or the, if you have a life cycle expected for something, you can plug that life cycle in, and it'll tell you, it'll pop up and say, okay, next year, this is end of life, this is end of life, this is end of life. Or if it's something that requires regular inspections, you plug it in, and it goes, all right, well, next week, you need to inspect X, Y, and Z assets, because you're due for your annual or whether monthly inspection. So instead of relying on a person to remember that thing, and this, this system will allow that to be all entered. And then that way, everything's more efficient, and the work orders are created automatically. So it knows that well number, whatever, is due for an inspection, it's going to create that work order within whatever timeframe. And then it goes into the system, and someone can go out there, they can, they can check it out, they can remotely, you know, sign off on the inspection via, like, you know, a tablet, whatnot. And so it does actually create a lot more efficient process using something like that, as opposed to just a paper log or something.
I think we take a lot of things for granted. You turn on the tap, the water comes out, you flush your toilet, you know, it goes to the wastewater treatment plant. But the system that, you know, processes all that, it ages. And so you have to keep track of these things. You know, what's the age of your water system? What's the age of your valve, as you mentioned? What's the age of this and that? And you need to, you know, lube things and grease things and replace things. You know, last year, we replaced the Dennison line, water main line, because it was leaking here and there, here and there. Again, we had a healthy reserves that were able to do that. But you need to maintain the infrastructure. If you don't, you're going to pay for it in a big way.
Yeah. Can you go, Hamed, to kind of our general fund overview, as far as percentages, when it comes to our, maybe start on the revenue side, and then maybe the expenditures? But, you know, the general fund covers everything that's not water, wastewater, airport, for the most part. There's some, some subsidies into the airport fund from the general fund. But, you know, that's the fund that does most of the spending, and obviously brings in most of the revenues as well. So how are those percentages kind of broken up, at least the big ones within the general fund?
So our general fund revenue budget was about 17.2 million. And most of that, well, not most of it, I'd say a little bit more than half of that now is sales tax. It used to be maybe about a quarter. Now with Measure S, we've pretty much more than doubled our sales tax revenue. So that's our main revenue source. At 51%, it's about 8.7 million. After that, you know, you've got your property taxes, your TOT taxes, and, and they're all pretty stable taxes, just kind of slow, modest growth. But the Measure S really has boosted our revenue, allowed us to be stable, and given us those, those good fund balances.
And we've, we budgeted conservatively against those anticipated revenues, and we always tend to. But we might think one number's going to come in, someone, a consultant may say, oh, it's going to look up here. And we, we can budget it up there, but we see that time and time again, whether it's other cities or the state's famous for it, they will budget at that high number, and then come mid-year, they go, oh, wait, revenues are way down. We're going to slash this, 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 and this. And it creates chaos for everybody. So as opposed to doing it that way, it's like, let's find more of a reasonable couple percentage more from last year, whatever it might be, budget to that. When, if the other money comes in, great. If not, we're not forced to make cuts halfway through the year, because the revenues aren't coming in like we expected.
Exactly. You want, you want to be conservative with your budgeting. If the numbers come in higher, then that's what our mid-year adjustments are for. Now that we've actually seen the actual revenues coming in at that point, we can revise them and make, you know, proper estimates at that point.
Yeah. And as, and true to form, and maybe even more so than we anticipated, we knew going into Measure S, and a lot of the messaging from what we, where the research we're able to do, based on visits of major city businesses, you know, about 80% of those visits are coming from people that don't live in the city, whether they're just passing through and stopping at Pilot Loves, and getting gas and food, and moving on their way to wherever they're going, or they are shoppers from the unincorporated areas around the city, they're coming in, they're utilizing those services, paying the sales tax. That money is a big benefit. It's almost four to one for a city resident, because they're, they're getting the benefit of that extra spending. And this is why we're able to turn around and do some of these projects to improve, you know, the city services that they're, they're living with daily.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and we, you know, on Measure S, we, we have quarterly calls with our consultant to go over this, the estimates. And, and it's really been remarkable seeing kind of, you know, what new revenue is coming in now out of that Measure S. I mean, the online sales, the, the car sales, you know, these were things we were not getting much, if, if at all in the past. Now we're getting that 1% of that, that's a big component, you know, and it's, it's allowed us to revise our Measure S estimates a little bit upward. We're still being conservative with those. But it, we, we feel we're working with pretty good numbers right now.
Yeah. And on the expenditure side, and in kind of keeping the conversation going with Measure S, obviously, we've talked about the roads and the public works projects, and public safety, to an extent, we're getting to the point where, you know, knock on wood, Tatchby Police Department's fully staffed. We hope we can keep it that way for a while. There's been some, some, some new, great new hires in that department. But also, we, we talked a lot about public safety in general during Measure S, fire being a big part. This is one of the years where that, that fire payment is starting to be increased to the county current as a, as a contract city for them. And so, you know, a lot of that money is still going, and will continue, that payment continues to grow for the next several years. And then after that, you know, it'll probably be up around where it was, where, where it is currently, and where it's going to be. So public safety and fire is still a big part of those Measure S funds.
Yeah. And, and, you know, we talked about earlier, of course, using Measure S on these street projects. Those are the, you know, the 4.5 million over the next two years. But the big component, like you said, is kind of maintaining, preserving our public safety and the fire contracts. So fire contract, next year is about 1.3 million. That makes up about 7% of our general fund budget. If you fast forward that in four years, when we see the, kind of the full extent of what that contract has risen to, that's almost double at 13%. And you're at about 2.3 million of the general fund budget. So that was another reason, you know, when we put Measure S out there to the voters, we knew we were going to see these big fire cost increases. And so it's great having this revenue to be able to maintain that, allow for those increases, and still preserve police. You know, our police budget right now is about 35% of the general fund budget.
Which is a great number, by the way. Most, a lot of cities are hovering around 50, if not over 50%. And best practices, always try to keep it, because police departments are expensive. There's expensive equipment, insurance, liability, all sorts of things. Obviously, employees, because you want to have officers, and, and people are the most expensive asset we have. But it's a 35% number is a very healthy number, because most cities are at or above 50%.
Yeah.
What are the other major kind of expenditure-type things that make up that section of the budget?
So, you know, we, again, the, the general fund has these transfers out to the capital projects. So next fiscal year, 2 million for the street rehab project. We talked a little bit about some of the other one-time costs, a lot of one-time capital outlay costs. So there's the police vehicles, there's a radio encryption upgrade from the police department, a lot of public works, vehicle purchases, maintenance of our facilities, and so on. And then, you know, a lot of the other stuff, then the fire contract we mentioned, but everything else, kind of just maintaining, you know, what operations and keeping things running smoothly and efficiently.
Yeah. And going back to the fire contract piece too, it is a reason why the next couple of years, while that, that contract is slowly ramping up, this is a good time to spend some of that revenue on the roads and public works projects, because three years down the road, when that fire contract's around the over $2 million threshold, we may not, who knows? With growth, yes, in terms of the revenue, we may be okay to still do a lot of both. But this was a good time to probably take that opportunity.
Yeah, you can see that when we, in our budget, you know, you see the five-year kind of snapshot of our general fund budget. And yeah, we were going to see, you know, two to $3 million surpluses in these next couple of years. But as you said, as that fire contract continues to increase in those outer years, we're not seeing those large surpluses. Those surpluses are kind of dwindling down. So you're exactly right. You know, take advantage right now, when you've got these surpluses, before the fire contract really hits its peak, do some of these one-time projects and equipment expenditures.
Anything else on the budget, Greg, Hamed, kind of standing out?
You know, I'm just sitting here thinking, I was listening to the two of you talk. Corey, you're a great host and interviewer. Hamed, you, you've got the numbers perfectly memorized and done, and it's in your head. And so it, it just makes me proud that we are, you know, we have such a great, well-oiled machine, if you will, and things are clicking along. And again, we have a, a nice plan.
Yeah.
So I would encourage people, if you want to know more about the budget, call me, call Hamed. We can meet with you certainly, on, on your tax dollars being spent in your city, which is, which is what the city is all about, right? Local control. Measure S allowed us to, you know, divert or, or keep the money that's earned here, because all of those sales tax dollars, they're sent to Sacramento, and they, they don't always come back, like the state promises, right? And so Measure S has allowed us to keep and retain, and utilize, and invest in our own town.
Yeah, it's been, it's the best. Yeah. And it's been a great education for me over the last, you know, four years and change, being involved in the budget process, as much as like, you sit there and your eyes want to bleed. Hamed, you are a hero for being able to do this on a daily basis. But to understand the funding, where it's going, you know, where it's coming in, where it's going out, the priorities. And I'm just, I'm actually proud of the fact that we're doing what we say with Measure S. I mean, and I think I'd mentioned that right after it passed, I said, I'll die on this hill. Like, we're going to do what we say we're going to do. It's infrastructure, it's public safety, dispatch, those sorts of things. And we're, you know, we're putting our money where our mouths is. So that's, that's great to see.
And that was exactly my, my opening statement last night. As we started the budget hearing, the meeting, I talked about how I'm very proud of the fact that the City of Tatchby, you know, passed Measure S, the trust was put into our, our hands, and we're doing exactly what we promised we would do, unlike other government agencies above us.
And sometimes things come up, and we can, we.
It matters.
We didn't realize it, or it wasn't budgeted, and we're, and we think, you know what? We, we need to do that. Let's, we have the money. Let's go, let's handle this issue now, as opposed to saying, well, we got to wait another year, you know, that sort of thing. So I know it makes Hamed's life.
And you know, we're just hitting the tops of the waves here. You know, the tops of the waves with, with the budget. There's, oh, there's so much more. It's award-winning budget, you know, the last several years, starting with Hannah Chung, and, and she's now actually a council member. So she, she actually knows how the system works, which is really great, because then she can ask legitimate questions and, and pull things out that we might not necessarily, you know, state, because we're just doing that every day. It's just kind of day in and day out. But she's pulling information out, which is absolutely astounding. It's, it's the best way to be. And so the council now, we've got five people that are really well-balanced. They understand different backgrounds. And the, like I said, the, the, the budget is award-winning, and so we're going to, you know, apply this budget, of course.
Yeah, I mean, that's, well, you touched on that. I mean, I think a lot of people are saying, oh, are you relieved now that, you know, the, the budget's approved and, and, you know, the work is done? And yes, I mean, we started this process back in January. We've gone through mid-year budgets, and departments have given us all their numbers, and we, you know, compiled everything together, get it to this point where it's approved. And, and yeah, it's a big sigh of relief that we're done with that. But we still have a lot of work done, or work to be done, you know, as far as putting the actual budget book together. So we're working with our departments now to, you know, complete their department narratives. And, you know, we, we make this nice budget book with pictures and goals and objectives, and tying it to our strategic plan. And that's when we'll put that together. Hopefully by the end of July, we'll submit it for those awards. And, and it, to me, that, that budget book then is, again, it's, it's following all the best practices of what's recommended out there by our finance organizations. It's showing the transparency, and, and that we are doing what we say we're going to do.
And the budget is, you know, we talked about the budget and putting the budget together. But the budget is an everyday document. We refer to the budget every day, and it's a reflection of what the citizens of this city want, right? They want us to maintain the city. They want us to keep it safe. They want us to keep it clean. And that's exactly what we're doing. And the budget is a living, breathing document. We adopted a one-year budget with the next four years as an anticipated budget. But things change, right? Revenues are coming and going, right? They go up, they go down. Certain things come up. You need to, you know, unplanned, oh my God, that just happened, right? That's where the reserves come in. So it's really about keeping your finger on the pulse, understanding the city really well, having a great team that produces exactly what, what needs to be done. And we, we, we take great pride in that.
And that budget document, once the full book is completed, we post it on the website under the finance section. You can click through it, and it really is, you know, I've, I've looked at other places, whether it's other cities, you know, special districts, or it might be. And I, I, it's, sometimes it frustrates me. I'm like, this is not easy to read. Like, I, I'm hunting for too many things. I don't have to hunt through our budget. It's pretty, it's pretty self-explanatory. I mean, so it's, it is very transparent and easy document. And then, you know, the next best, the next thing at work too, for the finance department. I mean, we operate on the July 1 to June 30 fiscal year, and it's closing out this fiscal year, because, you know, people like me and all other department heads are notorious for like, oh, wait, that was last year. We got, you know, oh, I got to spend this out of last year's budget. That's how it was budgeted. And, you know, your chaos week, closing out the fiscal year gets a little nuts for you and the rest of the department.
Yeah, it's, it's nonstop. I mean, it's, it's the budget, it's the year end. And then, before you know it, we're going to have auditors in here for our year-end audit, preliminary audit, then the year-end audit. And so, kind of just goes from budget season into audit season. And then before you know it, we're right back working on budget again. So it's never-ending.
Yeah, Hamed and I were just talking about a couple of weeks ago, we're like, didn't we just do this? But we actually do, we do this work every day. That's what we do. That's who we are.
Yeah, absolutely. No, it's continuing.
It's important work.
To evolve. So that was the, the budget meeting, and it was a good, I mean, I had a few conversations afterwards with some other staff of, it was probably one of the, as far as engagement with the council, great questions being asked. Obviously, with Council Member Chung, having her history in finance, she understands it. Council Member Power, though, had really great questions. There was a lot of discussion about different line items and different funds, and where it may be. And so I, it was one of our better engaging meetings.
Mr. Smith, you know, he's been on the council for many years. He understands what's going on. He's like, okay, yeah, we did that. Okay, here we go. We're going to do it again. Or we didn't need to do that. So the engagement is, is well-done. And then Joan Pogan Cord, Mayor Pro Tim, she was running the meeting last night. She did a great job, you know, understanding what's going on. So we're very proud of the fact that we have this great relationship.
Yeah.
The trust is there on both sides with the council, the, the public and staff.
Yeah. And they, you know, they, they had good questions to ask about why this was done this way. And so that was all, like I said, it was probably the best one that I'd been experiencing. It was a good, it was a good engagement with the council on the, on the budget.
Truly.
So that was the special meeting, and then the regular meeting at six. A lot of things actually addressed were, you know, we had a lot of those capital projects and/or purchases to make, approved in the budget. And then we had to approve the contracts to go out and get those things. So we had a lot of those on the public work side, we already talked about them. You know, a few of the things that, that popped up as well. A lot of that was centered around those, those purchases that were approved in the budget. Special event, you know, we, we, even our own events, we do a special event application like anybody else for road closures and that sort of thing. So the All-American Fourth of July was approved. And I know a press release will be going out soon to kind of do the schedule of events of that, that, that event, annual event on July 4th. I think this year it's a Thursday, I believe. And so, you know, a lot of partnership, TV RPD's got the, the All-American 5K, we've got the Ed Grimes Memorial Pancake Breakfast, it's normal music, TVAA's got vendors in the park, we'll have food, we've got, of course, fireworks in the afternoon, in the evening, afternoon, the, the Bad Bulls event that TMRA puts on. So, but, you know, the part of, the city's part of that was, was handled in terms of the special event last night. So looking forward to that event again, coming up here in a little less than a month.
Right. So a great collaboration with Tatchibelli Recreation Parks District with the collaboration for the lessons for pickleball, which is really great. And then Build a Plane, which is a great collaboration between the city and local EAA chapter and Tatchby Society Pilots. So we rent them a hangar, very cheap every year. So the Build a Plane program still continues out at the airport. We talked about all. We talked about all the different purchases of the equipment. And then we had three notices of completion. So whenever we, there's a project that is, you know, we hire a contractor, you have to go through the whole project. But then you have, you know, the notice of completion, meaning the city of Tatchby says, yes, that's, that was done right to our specifications.
We can pay you now.
We can pay you now. And so Northside sidewalks, uh, phase three, that was a great little project, two blocks, I think of sidewalks. Tatchby Boulevard Bike fencing. I know we talked about that. We've talked about that several times. But if you haven't seen it, man, you need to go out there and look. It's, it's a great, great project. So the fencing project was done. And then Brentwood Drive, along Brentwood, there were a lot of sidewalks and some handicap ramps that were put in. So all of those were notice of completion and we're really excited about, you know, being done, checking those boxes and then moving on to the next, um, to the next project. And then, uh, we applied for a grant, we will be applying for a grant, Urban and Community Forestry Grant Program. So three or 400 trees in the Antelope Run area, which is going from Walmart south towards Warrior Park. That's a great path that people walk and ride their bicycle on. Collaboration with Tatchby Cummings County Water District on that. So we're really excited about being able to apply for that grant. So lots of different things are happening at your city council meeting. We would encourage you to get involved as we always do. And, or call me, call anybody at, at the city and we'll, uh, answer questions for you.
Yeah. Well, uh, we've, with those, those three projects that noticed the completion were very, very well-run and smooth. You know, they're, they weren't giant projects, but of course the fencing was a, a lot of fencing to put in. But the contractor did a wonderful job and that fence is straight as an arrow. You can stand there and look all the way down Tatchby Boulevard there. They did a phenomenal job. So, and then hopefully, yeah, we get that, uh, urban and community forestry grant. Similar to the grant, different organization, but similar to the one we did years ago that put the trees on the Tatchby Boulevard Bike Path and on the Medians and Currys. So hopefully, uh, we get one similar because of our past success, uh, with, with a grant just like that from a different organization. So we will see, it's pretty competitive, but hopefully with the council's resolution and support, uh, we'll, we'll get that grant. So that was it for council. I think probably we should bring up too, that, uh, we've got a special event of our own, I guess, on Monday. As, uh, the, the ribbon will be cut and the fence taken down and opened up at, uh, the new Valley Park.
So another, uh, grant-funded project through the state of California, the Clean California Grant Project. Once again though, we did, we did, um, need to use some of our general fund money, uh, that we had to put into that project. But we're really excited about opening the Valley Park. It's on Valley and Aspen. You've probably seen the construction happening for the last several months. Monday morning, 10 o'clock, June 10th. We invite everybody to come by. Walmart has donated some soccer balls. We're going to allow the kids to put their hands in wet concrete, kind of memorialize that day. We're really excited. So everybody's invited to come out and join us. 10 o'clock, Monday morning.
Yeah, we've got, uh, some soccer ball giveaways, got a couple of hundred to give away to the kids. We've got the, uh, Tatchby High School Boys and Girls Soccer Team. They're going to be out there doing a little, little instructional clinics on the, on the field. Um, and it's an, it's an amazing facility and we're so excited to open it up and, uh, and get it rolling. And it was still a little work to do here and there, but, uh, it's, we wanted to get it open for summer because kids are in that neighborhood specifically are itching to get in there and use the playground equipment and the, the picnic structures. And of course, the five-a-side soccer field, which is, which is just so much fun.
Right. I'm told that's the first day of summer break.
It's the first day.
Kind of worked out well.
Yes. Yeah. So we're, uh, doing that and, uh, there's some little button up things here and there. But, uh, yeah, excited about that facility. We, we believe as far as the five-a-side goes, it's the first public five-a-side facility in, in Kern County. There's a few private ones in Bakersfield, the old Laurel Glen Tennis Club turned into one similar and they've got some similar courts, but that's a club. And, you know, so this is a publicly available facility. Um, and, uh, we're excited about that. And really the development, you know, we were just, we're out there with the soccer coaches from THS, talking about the clinic. And they looked at the facility and they said, this is a game changer for all the kids in the area. I mean, this is a place you can come and you can train, you know, and not necessarily have organized practices, but a kid can go get some work in. And a lot of soccer programs use either indoor facility or a turf facility to just work on ball handling and things like that. And so it's, it's not only that for the kids to, to grow up and, and play the game, but also, um, for adults, it's beautiful. Cause it's not that, you don't got to run as much as you do on a regular soccer field. And, and as you get older, you want to keep playing soccer, but you're like, that's a lot of running. Don't have that issue here. Uh, and, uh, and it's, you know, kind of like hockey, the ball's in play all the time, off the nets, off the boards. And, uh, and the goals are, are inside of the wall. So, um, I think it's going to be attractive, attractive for adults and kids as well.
I'm pretty proud of the fact that we're able to provide some additional recreational opportunities, whether it's the pickleball courts that were just opened or the five-a-side that's opening soon. And you know, who knows what's coming next? So we'll see.
Yeah, exactly. They've been, you know, the pickleball's been well utilized and I'm sure we're going to see the same exact thing with, with five-a-side. So I'm pretty, pretty excited about it. So, uh, anything else, Greg, Ahmed?
I think we're good. You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah. We encourage people to call us. If you have any questions, please call.
Yeah. You can also email us, uh, media@tachbecityhall.com if you have any questions or any, uh, potential topics for a, a future show. And oh, just to mention too, Farmer's Market opens Thursday. Just want to throw that out there, which is Thursday, uh, what is that, the sixth? Was it? Yeah. Yeah. Thursday, June 6th. There you go. So if you'd listened to it before then, uh, we're open Farmer's Market on Green Street, four to seven, uh, this, uh, this coming Thursday and through the end of August, they'll be out there every Thursday with the exception of Fourth of July. It's on a Thursday this year. So, uh, we encourage folks to head out to Central Park for that event there. So, uh, yeah, so that's our, our upcoming schedule. And again, you can email us, media@tachbecityhall.com. And with that being said, we'll catch you next time on Tatcha Pod.